Okay, roll call.
Mr. McClay.
Here.
Mr. Blanchard.
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Did you call me? I can't hear.
Down here.
Yes, Mrs. Miller.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Strebe.
And yes, I do.
Okay, now we are about to adopt the agenda. But before we do that, I just want to say that this is not being livestreamed right now due to the bandwidth in this building at this time. But it will be posted to Facebook afterwards. Everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda. Does anybody have any changes?
We are going to need to pull item D under number nine for a separate vote.
Separate vote?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll pull item D under number nine for a separate vote. Anything else? Okay, hearing none. Can I have an adoption of the agenda with pulling nine D for a separate vote?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Strebe.
Yes.
Mr. McClay.
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes, including the addendum.
Okay, thank you. And now I need an approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting of August 10th and the special meeting of August 31st. Everybody's had a chance to look through those. Is there any additions or deletions? Hearing none may have a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Blanchard.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. McClay.
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Strebe.
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is special commendations. And I need a motion to approve the following donations. School supplies to Fredericton Elementary from Waterford United Methodist Church at a value of $500. $100 to the class of 2021 Memorial Garden from Salem United Methodist Church. $250 from Knox County Cattlemen's Association for the Welcome Back Luncheon. Sweet corn donation to the elementary Welcome Back Luncheon value of $90. 150 gift cards from East and Nutrition valued at $1,200. A crown for the homecoming from Griffin Jewelers value of $7. And new staff orientation handouts from the following businesses. Kukozin Construction, DJs, Fredericton Chevrolet, Fredericton PTO, and TJB Inspired Photography. So, that is quite a list, and we are very appreciative of all of our donors and all of our businesses. May I have a motion to approve those donations?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Strebe.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. McClay.
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard.
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Yes.
Okay, next we will move on to the treasurer's report and treasurer's consent agenda.
Okay, I have three items on the agenda for this evening. I have my financial report, amended appropriations for, we did receive the fifth quarter grant that pays for Mrs. Burden's extra days in the month of July. And I have a list of records that needs to be destroyed per the record retention. They have been approved by the Ohio Records Commission, and they are ready for disposal. That will happen October 22nd is when the shredding company will come to dispose of those records. The financials for the month of August, revenue did exceed expenditures in the month of August due to property tax allocation that was received. There were several large expenditures in the month of August. We bought some elementary curriculum. We had our annual payment to Meta for our core services. We refinished all three gym floors, so that'd be the elementary, middle, high, and then up here. We also purchased a learning platform that we purchased annually from Renaissance Learning. We made our first payment on the bus lease, which was $17,000. We also bought high school, middle school curriculum, our annual SRS annual surcharge, and the other large one was HVAC controls that were through the K Company. Revenue was $600,000 higher than FY '21, and that was mainly due to the district hitting the 20 mile floor, which generated new revenue for property taxes, and also the change in state foundation that is now taking place where all of the revenue for where is a child attends school now comes directly to the school. And if they attend, say, a community school or a digital academy, that money now flows directly to that school, so there's no ins and outs. It is solely where the child is educated. And that was a slight increase in state aid. Expenditures were slightly higher during the month of August by $13,000. That was mainly due to the one-time expenditures that we had at the beginning of the school year. And the, how I mentioned where the children were educated for a community school or a digital academy, the money that would have been deducted out of state aid, so open enrollment out annually was around $340,000. That was for approximately 56 kids. Community school was $338,000, and that was for 20 children that went to community schools last year. And then autism scholarship, which we had 1.5 kids apply for the autism scholarship. So that money now goes directly to those schools where the children attend, not through here anymore. And the appropriations I mentioned, that is the fifth quarter grant that we received annually, and then my records destruction. And that is it.
Okay, questions for Heather?
Heather, based on the expenses, what of those things that were the large ticket items came out of the grant?
So, the curriculum, elementary curriculum for curriculum associates came out of the grant. The Renaissance Learning for the learning platform came out of the grant. Instructure came out of the grant. And the K Company for the HVAC controls came out of the grant.
So that didn't impact our general fund?
It did not impact general fund.
Okay, good. And then...
Those all came out of S R two.
S R two.
Mm-hmm.
And then you gave us the information on the kids that are going out.
Yes.
How does that compare to the kids coming into the district?
So, the, we have an open enroll in and an open enroll out. So the net change of what we would get for the open enroll kids is right around $849,000 a year.
To, to our benefit?
To our benefit.
And that's after the deduction of these amounts that are reported?
Correct.
So, say that number again, 840...
849,000.
Okay. And that's open enrolled in?
That's open and roll in. We have right around 161 kids open and roll in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none may have a motion to approve the treasurer's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard.
Yes.
Mr. McClay.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Strebe.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and next we'll move on to the superintendent's report and superintendent's consent agenda.
I would like to begin by talking about how wonderful our staff is with working with our students to best meet their learning needs. Everyone is working hard. We are working with new curriculum purchases and looking at things that we would like to have in our school district to best meet our kids using our S R grants, and so we're off to a good start. We also have several new staff members this year, and they are also doing an amazing job. We are very, very happy with the progress of our new staff. The elementary celebrated today their summer reading goals, and the Title I teachers organized that, and the F E A paid for the ice cream, I believe. So thank you very much. Our high school class officers are planning a blood drive and homecoming. F F A contests are starting up, and they're in person, so we're excited to see that this year, that they can participate in person. Our sixth and seventh grade students are beginning the YES concert. Our sixth grade just attended the youth enrichment series in Mount Vernon, and it was on drumming and dancing. We also have our next edition of the 43019 magazine coming out in our community, and there's some really good pieces from our school district in that. On the agenda, the principals and I are going to give our presentation on our restart plan in a few minutes. That is the same restart plan that we did last year. And so we're going to do an updated one for this school year. We also have a construction project that will be approved tonight for our theater annex room. We also have several personnel recommendations and changes. We also have some student teachers coming into the district from the NAS. We also have some chaperones and volunteers for our students. We also have some supplemental contracts on the board agenda. So now I am going to go over, and we are going to give a presentation.
Thank you, Breton. So I want to begin by sharing with you a Zoom meeting that the superintendents had with the children's hospital CEOs or directors today, as well as the governor. And so I just wanted to share some highlights from that meeting. During that one-hour Zoom meeting, all of the CEOs or directors from the children's hospitals in Ohio gave a report out on COVID cases in each one of those hospitals, as well as the governor spoke and talked as well, and I'll share some of those highlights. So the meeting really began with each hospital just sharing where they are and how they would like for school districts to help. And so what they were asking was for us to help slow down the curve. They asked to do masking for at least four weeks because there's a significant uptick in the variants, and we're kind of right in the middle of that surge at the heightened state. And they are asking school districts to do masking for at least four weeks so that they can get those cases down and return to a more normal hospital procedure in terms of their ICUs and their rooms and such. They also shared universally that, you know, in their positions as doctors, they really present a sense of calmness, and yet now, as a group, they're very, very scared. Another doctor shared the impact on all care. They said due to the COVID cases in the children's hospitals, it's taking up rooms that may be children with cancer or broken bones or other illnesses, and so there's not enough space in the hospital and help in the hospital to meet the needs of all children's illnesses. And so I wanted to give a few highlights. So from Akron's Children's Hospital, they currently have 18 COVID patients, five are intubated, and they are now diverting patients to other hospitals. And Dayton Children's Hospital, they also have the same number of overwhelming numbers. They do not have any beds, and 40% of COVID cases are in the intensive care unit. The Prometica Children's Hospital reported that last night at 10:36, all of Lucas County experienced an unprecedented code red alert, and that code red alert lasted for eight and a half hours. And what that meant was every hospital in Lucas County was at maximum capacity, and so any EMS run, they went on a rotation from different hospitals within Lucas County. So you didn't necessarily get to be transported to the hospital closest to where you live. Cincinnati Children's Hospital, they have the highest number of positive cases. They have the highest number of children in ICU. They have the highest number of children on ventilators. They said it is breaking our system, and it's also breaking point for pediatrics. The Nationwide Children's Hospital, which is closest to us in Columbus, their CEO reported that the health system is in crisis. It's a critical situation.
It's nothing to do with masks.
And they have 10...
Why are you scaring us? It's nothing to do with masks.
Thank you. They have 10 in the ICU, five on breathing tubes, and they're diverting to adult hospitals. And the last one is the Rainbow Babies and Children's Hospital, and they have a 24% increase in positivity, and they also have their highest numbers. I also wanted to share what the governor said today. So the governor spoke...
Governor woke.
Our governor spoke to... Our governor spoke to the superintendents today at one. And he also did a press conference and spoke to the public at, I believe, three o'clock today. When he was speaking to us, um he did share that um if he could, he would do a mask mandate, but because of Senate Bill twenty-two, um he is unable to do that. And if. And he shared that it would be overridden by the legislature. So I just wanted to share with you that new information that I received today. And so now we're going to do our PowerPoint. So last school year, we did a district restart plan for twenty-one, twenty-two. As you know, the only mandate that came out from the Ohio Department of Health and the Ohio Department of Education in July was a mask mandate for all students on buses. And the remainder of those decisions were um based on um school boards. And so that is why when we started our school year, we did not anticipate um going to masks. So we did not anticipate that. And so that is why we are now presenting this to you instead of presenting to you a district restart plan in either July or August due to the fact that we did not anticipate that. So I wanted to begin with our COVID dashboard. So we have a COVID dashboard and it's on the front page of the district website. And it includes positive student and staff cases. It also includes quarantine student numbers. And so also on the COVID dashboard, it states, "We will continue to monitor our positive cases and quarantine numbers for the purpose of evaluating our masking policy." And so I, one reason I wanted to really emphasize the four weeks and how critical the four weeks are is because of that variant. And when the um children's hospitals talked to us about three weeks ago, I would say, they were really um heavily emphasizing that this variant was not expected when those rules came out in July. So when the Ohio Department of Health and the Ohio Department of Education came out with the school guidance, that variant wasn't in place. And they shared with us that if it would have been in place, then maybe that guidance would have been different. So one thing that we are doing is we are monitoring um for the purpose of evaluating our masking policy. I want to share with you our trend data. So if you look at our trend data, um we went to masks on September first. And if you look, you will see that our trend data is going down um based on our active cases. The next slide is our student quarantines since our mask mandate as well. And so we are seeing a downward growth pattern. And um I wanted to share that with you. So a couple of things I want to share that's different this year from last year. So we have two models that we can do. One is traditional learning, which we are doing now. It's learning occurs every day, face to face, five days a week. And our other option is remote learning. And the remote learning is provided by our teachers through online classes using digital technologies. So in the event that we would have a classroom or a building or a grade level and we would need to go into remote learning, um our teachers last year were um received a lot of professional development on Google Classroom. And so they worked really hard all of last year in preparation for that. But luckily, we were in a wonderful situation last year where we did not miss any school days and have to go into remote learning and but we did have calamity days. And so um in the event that we would have to do that, um that would be our remote learning. A lot of people have asked, "Why are we not doing the online digital academy this year?" So why are we not? And so I put up this statement um from O D E. So begin, so the Ohio Department of Education told us and um the summer that beginning with the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, that districts that desire to operate an online learning school, they need to view that as a separate school with its own I R N number. And all students engaged in that online learning must be enrolled in that specific school. And the decision to operate an online learning school is not a casual one. Creating such a school should be approached with a sense of permanency and longevity. An online learning school is not intended to be a transition strategy for a short period as the state continues to address COVID nineteen related concerns. So we're not happy that that is occurring with the Ohio Department of Education because we would love to be able to give our parents an option of an online digital academy. And and complete transparency, um when I was speaking to our school lawyer yesterday, I said, "What would happen if I did it? What would happen if I just did it? What is going to be the punishment to myself, our school district, if we just did it?" And provided that opportunity. And she said, "Well, they could take away state funding for that child or they would make that child possibly make up all of those hours." Because I was not supposed to do that unless it was for a long period of time and wasn't related to COVID. And so at no time would I ever want to put one of our students or families in that position, especially a senior who is trying to graduate and um have them find out that they may have to make up those hours. So I wanted to really explain that because we are all very disappointed that we are not able to do that option for our families this year. So traditional um learning, so um very similar to last year, we are attempting to space our students three to six feet um apart in diameter as well as in pods. And Mr. Caputo, would you like to talk a little bit about pods?
Sure. There's um several classrooms at the elementary building who have uh small groups of kids in sets of four uh to where those students are in pro- uh closer proximity. And then the rest of the other pods, uh we attempt to get those as far apart as possible, six feet apart, so we can socially distance there. So if there's uh any opportunity for us to do contact tracing there, it's really minimized to a a smaller group of students.
We have common areas such as the cafeterias where we're trying to maintain that three to six feet for social distancing. Same with the hallway, single flow traffic patterns. Um transportation, regular bus schedules with required mask wearing and our cafeterias where we are trying to do that. So another um information, because my goal is not to throw anybody under the bus and that's not my goal, but I also think it's important to share that, you know, the superintendents in our county, superintendents in nearby counties, we are trying to do everything possible. And so one um idea that I presented to the health department was, can we keep our kids unmasked if they're more than three feet away?
Yes.
And I um was told, "No, no." And one, and so.
Don't be a sheep. Don't be a sheep.
So we have, we have, we have, I have, we have tried every single way possible to make it work for our students where we are not quarantining students um as many students. And that's just one example. And as you know, the health department in every county in Ohio has the right to quarantine and that is out of our hands. And so that, if you have any questions about quarantining, that's really um at the discretion of the Ohio Department of Health and each county health department. Next slide. Face masks. So we implemented um face masks with staff. Did that for a couple of reasons. Um one reason is we had four staff members test positive and all four of those staff members were vaccinated. And so. I think you heard me. So our number one goal with our staff is to keep them in school, educating our students and supporting our students. So it's critically important that our staff is here, our bus drivers are here, our cafeteria workers are here because some of those positions could easily shut us down. So if we don't have enough bus drivers, if we don't have enough cafeteria employees, if we do not have enough teachers in the elementary or the middle school or the high school, that would force us into remote learning. So we want to make sure that our staff is here and that we are able to educate our students every day, five days a week. Um we, um students in grades um K twelve, um face masks are required unless an exemption is approved. And so that just really goes over um school transportation. Um while in buildings, face masks for students will be safely provided throughout the day. And if face masks need to follow the C D C guidelines. So one thing I did last week was I created a district mask committee. And the district mask committee is going to be staff, parents and community members. And we're going to come together. I'm going to rule that out tomorrow or the next day. And I've had, I've had several volunteers from our parents and our staff and our community. And then we're going to sit down and come up with some creative ideas for how we can get masks off kids within the instructional day. Next?
Yeah, uh typically, uh what we need are, you know, students and staff that have, you know, one or more symptom, uh usually more than one, temperatures over a hundred degrees. We always want you to stay home, coughs, headaches, body aches, sore throat. You know, if you have multiple symptoms, to typically just stay home and see if they go away. I mean, the common cold didn't die, you know, there's very good chance. But just be more cognizant of that. Uh, you know, we do encourage students always, we've got hand sanitizer out in the lunchrooms, uh at every classroom when they enter the building. Uh wash your hands, use sanitizer. Uh again, when we are required to be under that six feet in the building, we require a face mask. Just, I mean, we don't have to quarantine. I I can give you the numbers from the middle and high school. The first uh I want to say the first eight days of school, by day eight, I think it was, I had over a hundred and forty sixth through twelfth graders quarantined. And just to, just to uh throw that out, last year we quarantined a total in the sixth through twelve of two hundred and fifty-seven. Last year, we had zero student, student transmission, sixth through twelve.
There you go.
This year, when we weren't wearing masks, we've had almost every one of those that were positive infected another student through. All right, so. I just gave you numbers. All right, so. We are going to be cleaning and sanitizing again before, after schools, in the classrooms, throughout the building, we will be spraying down again uh to stop the uh spread. We clean the common areas uh several times a day before lunch, after lunch and uh before school starts and at the end of the day. And then we're sanitizing the buses daily.
So remote learning, in the event that we would shut down either a classroom or a grade level or a building, um we wanted to go over what that might look like. And it's very much the same as what we did last year, but we just never really had to use it. It doesn't, this, this doesn't include the students who are quarantined. The students who are quarantined, they're really interacting directly with their teachers. This is in the event that an entire first grade classroom would go into remote learning. So all of our students have access to a technology device. We have Wi-Fi access points that we added last year to our school buildings and parking lots. We use Google Classroom and other digital content, K twelve. The teachers will also have the opportunity to utilize instructional videos and regular online meetings with students. They also will have office hours and then there will be a twenty-four hour return um commu- communication plan between staff and students. And due to a variety of circumstances, we may find ourselves needing to engage in the remote learning periodically um throughout the year. It's just dependent on those quarantine factors. So I want to talk about um exemptions and so. So last year, we had a handful of medical exemptions and we had no religious exemptions. And so this year, we have had a significant number. And so I want to address um medical exemptions. And so we had one pers- one doctor that provided over forty letters. And those letters were a form letter. They were all the same and it was a form letter. And so as. And I, I had some concerns brought to me from community and staff. And as a result of that, we looked into whether the doctor was licensed by the state of Ohio. And the doctor was not licensed. So can I, can I finish? So the doctor was not licensed by the Ohio.
Let her talk, let her explain.
So I called the Ohio Department of Health in Columbus and I asked them for clarification on medical exemptions. And they said that they must be licensed medical providers in the state of Ohio. So as a result of that, I sent letters home and asked those parents that use that provider to find another provider and resubmit a medical exemption.
You're just a glorified teacher, that's it.
So religious.
Okay, let's let her explain.
So, so um relig- religious exemptions are not being given at this time. Um also, I wanted to address that the S R funds have nothing to do with the required mask wearing. Um, also, I wanted to address that the ESER funds have nothing to do with the required mask-wearing. I did.
Hey, you know what? I asked you earlier to be quiet. One more time, and I'm gonna have the police escort you out of here. This is a public meeting. Okay, policeman, can you take him out? One more loud comment, and you're out of here. I am the president of this board, and I have the right to remove anybody in this room that's out of hand.
Just go ahead and tell us the rest of us.
Oh, you're done with all that? Are you ready for me? Okay, now, um, after the superintendent's consent agenda, are there any questions from the board? Okay.
Susan, when you ask, uh, stated that students who are quarantined are interacting directly with teachers, how, tell, during the remote learning part, what does that look like? Can you say it one more time? I can hear you. Yeah. Students who are interacting, who are quarantined are interacting directly with their teachers. So if I have a, a child who's quarantined, what does that look like for my child?
So they are receiving direct instruction from their regular classroom teachers, period by period.
Oh, okay.
So what, uh, but, go ahead and explain that further, Mr. Blanchard.
Yeah, I, I think we got, that's if the entire class is quarantined. Are you asking about individual student or entire class?
I, I, I understand the whole class quarantine.
Yeah.
Individual students that are quarantined, what happens with that?
Uh, they, uh, the, they will go through Google Classroom, notes will be on there, assignments will be on there.
Oh, but no one details?
When did that start? That has not started yet, 'cause I know people are quarantined that just got homework, after getting out of quarantine.
Any other questions?
I'll, I'll answer for the elementary. So, for the elementary, what we try to do is our best to make sure that, uh, of course, we do have everyone kindergarten through twelve, through five with computers. Uh, all the teachers have been asked to make sure that they have lessons ready on their computers, at least have access. And then we also ask to make sure that the work is provided to the kids.
That's wrong, because my son did not be on computer after, he did not provide anything. No tape, nothing.
Any other questions?
Okay, hearing none. Do I have approve, a motion to approve items nine A through C and E through K of the consent agenda?
Second.
Rule call.
Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. McClay?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strebe?
Yeah.
Okay, and now do I have a motion to approve nine D of the superintendent's consent agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
Rule call.
Second, Mr. Strebe?
Yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strebe?
Yeah.
Mr. McClay?
Abstain.
Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Okay, now we move on to committee reports. And Patty, uh, how about the legislative side of things?
Uh, right now, the thing that seems to be the most, um, frequented item among the legislature is the redistricting piece. We know that because Ohio population is not growing at the same rate as some other states, uh, we are probably going to lose a seat at the federal level. Um, and they are looking at redistricting, so there's a lot of going back and forth uh, in terms of what's fair, what's equitable, what isn't, and, um, stay tuned, it'll be interesting to see what turns up. If you're interested in something like that, please contact your representatives and your senators around your, uh, perspective around redistricting, specifically as it impacts elections. Um, there's House Bill two forty-eight, uh, which has been introduced, and it, um, enacts a vaccination choice, um, an anti-discrimination act. It amends the current language in Ohio Revised Code. There's House Bill three fifty, which prohibits mandatory COVID vaccinations, vaccination proof, and it declare, they're declaring that an emergency, which means it will go through faster than typical legislation if approved. House Bill three eighty-eight prohibits certain action against, um, unvaccinated people, and it enacts the section that's already in Ohio Revised Code thirty-seven ninety-two oh five. Senate Bill one sixty-nine prohibits mandatory COVID nineteen vaccine, and it's kind of like the partner bill for House Bill three fifty. Uh, prohibits the vaccination proof and, um, enacts sections thirty-seven ninety-two oh two and thirty-seven ninety-two oh three of the Ohio Revised Code. But it also goes a step further in prohibiting requiring proof of vaccinations generally, and it also declares an emergency. Heather, another one that I'm looking at, I don't have enough information on it this time, but I wondered if you did, is House Bill three ninety-seven, which revises the laws regulating agricultural leases. Have you heard about this?
I heard, I, I read just a snippet of it today, but I don't, I need more information on it.
It's been just newly introduced, so I, I wanna dig into that to see how that's gonna impact our community specifically because of the amount of, uh, agricultural land that we have and how many.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, that could impact a lot of different things. House Bill four hundred prohibits, um, mandatory facial covering for students on school premises or on school buses, for those of you that are here tonight. Start contacting your legislators and stop yelling at us. We are not your legislators later. That's my report.
Now we'll move on to the finance committee. Charlie, and myself, and Heather, and Susan met the other day in the finance committee. Do you wanna give the report, Charlie? You want me to?
All I can.
Okay.
Heather already stole some of our thunder there on state funding and how that's gonna be getting rearranged and modified here over the upcoming months. We talked a little bit about the ESER funds, the three different ones, and money that we will be able to use for a variety of things that would keep us. The ESER funds are monies that will be provided to us that will not affect our general fund. They will be used for a variety of things, um, curriculum. We need a, we need a new chiller down in the building. We're looking at roof up here. Just all those projects that, there's never enough money to do. The government's actually gonna give us a little bit of money.
Is that for COVID precautions as well, that fund?
That I do not know.
I believe it is, and I believe that we submitted for number of students that were enrolled prior to the mask mandate, could you get money per student? We got money based on all the students with parents not thinking their kids would have to be masked.
Yep.
And if the parents had known before that their children were too vast, there's a very high likelihood you wouldn't have had quite as much money coming into you.
There's actually money coming into you as well.
This, that is true. It is based on student enrollment. Those numbers. Those numbers were. Yes, that, that money was based on last year's enrollment. So the money was actually, like, in our, in CCIP, which is part of ODE, which, which is where all of our grants are located. So that money was actually shown at the end of last year. So it was actually, like, this is the amount of money that you will have for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, beginning July first. So that money was actually shown, what we would get, at, back in March of last year.
And I'm willing to bet a parent can do, I think we put up for it with, for one year, let's get through this one year, do that for one year. Had they known it was going to happen again, I can almost put money on it, your enrollment would be down.
Anything else? Then, then the other, the ESER three grant, twenty percent of it does go to learning loss. So part of that is.
Correct, so twenty percent of the money that we get for the ESER three are the ARP ESER. Um, that is right around four hundred and eighty-five thousand. That will go to nine tutors to help for learning loss, and that will start in, hopefully in October, if we get enough tutors. Hate to take away from the subs, 'cause there is such a sub shortage in the county. Um, but we are allocating that money to nine tutors for the next two years to help provide for learning loss for our students through grades K through twelve. So that money, the ARP ESER, or the ESER three, that money is designated for that as well.
Are any of those monies tied to compliance with C P C guidelines?
No, I think that was on one of those slides where.
Okay, um, next we have park and recreation.
Nothing to report, we didn't have an August meeting.
Okay, Susan, Fredericton Community Development Liaison?
The Fredericton Community Development Foundation is doing wonderful things for our community. They are planning lots of different activities. Uh, they're having on October twenty-third, from twelve to four, a chili cook-off, a harvest festival. They are just planning so many wonderful things throughout the school year. There's a calendar that you can access on the website. They also are doing the four-three-oh-one-nine magazine. I, I applaud Sarah Otterd, who is the president of the Fredericton Community Development Foundation, 'cause she's really doing it out of generosity of her heart. And we are getting such good feedback in our community from that magazine. And some other things we talked about was, um, the Knox County, um, Community Foundation. They are going to get fifty thousand dollars if it is matched for a total of one hundred thousand dollars for furniture for this flash pad. And also for the downtown revitalization, um, streetscape project. Um, they need trash cans, benches, and brickwork, and so they are raising fifty thousand dollars, and then the Community Foundation will match that for a total of one hundred thousand dollars. The Inner Church Open House is coming soon. And I think that's it for the community, um, for the Fredericton Community Development Foundation.
Good. Uh, the career center?
Uh, mainly it was around, they need new heating and cooling because of their facility, so they've been getting bids for that. Uh, they are looking for new places to, um, because of student enrollment, um, to have other buildings to expand their student count for programs, so.
Okay. Uh, okay, now we have administrative reports with Matt and Brent.
Okay, um, I'll be brief. Um, we have a couple of things going on next, and I'm really pleased that we were able to participate at the elementary building for the youth enrichment series put on by the Knox County Educational Service Center, and they're getting their programming, so those YES concerts, we were not able to attend last year, but we'll be able to attend all grade levels, we'll be able to go this year. So I'm glad of that, to get the kids to have that opportunity. Um, on a student achievement level, in a building climate level, um, just really proud of how the teachers are working together, trying to kind of, uh, make the best out of the situation we're in and take care of our kids. Uh, to that effect, we did review in the building our, uh, positive behavior intervention support, it's called PBIS. Helps us support the students in their, their learning. Um, and we reviewed our goals for that. We also reviewed academic goals, which we continually try to strive to take care of. Over the past couple of years, it's been difficult, of course, with, you know, not being in school the one year in the spring and then last year. So, uh, I'm glad that we continue to try to make improvements there. Um, I do wanna make sure that I also note, and, uh, in order to help support some of those, uh, programs, we are having a fundraiser. Uh, we partnered up with the Mottos, uh, not only for our PBIS assembly, our PBIS program, but also for student achievement. Two things we have going with them is we'll have, um, uh, on September twenty-third, which is a Thursday, uh, we're partnering up with the Mottos, and they will be, um, donating a portion of their sales that night for anybody who shows the, um, flyer that I shared on Facebook. Uh, if they're hard copy or on their phone, um, a certain percentage of the ticket that night will go to the elementary school for, for that. They've also worked with me on a reading rewards program. Um, and I've asked teachers to work with, um, their students and set reading goals so that they could earn, uh, reward, um, that they'll be able to get a small, medium, and topping pizza from that establishment as well. So that's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you.
Uh, we're off to a really good start. Uh, we've got academics, uh, extracurriculars are in full swing. Uh, you've got my board report. Uh, Matt talked about Susan, did that, uh, youth enrichment series is really great K through seven program. The sixth graders came back really excited after dancing, watching Mr. Berry out there dancing the tonga drums, I guess, on, uh, September ninth. Uh, they had a great time. Uh, I wanna say October fifth, our seventh graders are heading out, uh, to Memorial, like, Memorial Theater in Mount Vernon. So, uh, they really enjoy that. Uh, Mr. Caputo talked about PBIS. We, uh, the sixth through twelve team has been working on that. Mr. Brown, uh, that is his area of expertise. He's met, uh, with teachers already, and I believe he's going to meet with student organizations to come up with some incentives and some rewards. Last year, they ended up doing, uh, a couple of field days and things like that. And our, you know, it's for positive behavior, and as a result, uh, we noticed a downward trend in discipline last year, so, uh, do notice the Mr. Brown, who is not here, he's at a volleyball game tonight, but, uh, wanna publicly say that. One of the great things that I'm seeing right now is, if you've been to one of our football games, the students are excited to be able to attend again. That, that picture I give, uh, that's on the board report from the Northridge game. I mean, we had a full house. When you count that we have a hundred, hundred and ten kids at the band, and then that student section, and then we touch the football players, I would say on an average Friday night, we have a good seventy-five, eighty percent of our high school is out there. They're that excited. So I just really wanted to, uh, put that out there. They are glad to be back and glad to be able to participate again.
Thank you. Uh, Business Advisory Council, Charlie?
I did not attend this past month, and I didn't even see any minutes. Did you?
I didn't either, yeah.
Nothing to report, sir.
Okay, Policy Liaison, Candy and Patty?
We have a meeting coming up on the twenty-seventh. We do have some policy revisions coming, um, per Neola.
Okay. Uh, F D A, Teresa?
Um, the teachers are just very excited to be back at school, be working in person with the children. It's just a blessing to be able to work with the kids, um, and be able to do our jobs. Uh, we sat up at the, uh, tomato show and passed out books to the children. And we had fun engaging with them during the tomato show. Probably passed out over three hundred books to the kids that came through. Uh, O P C also joined us for that activity. Uh, we, this is the first year we participated in the football pie auction. So, we, um, we're excited to, uh, do that for the first time this year. And we will be hosting our annual book fair in the first week of October. And we use the profits from that book fair to buy the books that we pass out to the children at the street fair and on Reader's Fest America. And we also, um, it gives the teachers an opportunity to restock the books in the classroom. At, um, we get something called Plastic Dollar. We just like money, but not money, but you can buy books with it. So, it's my favorite kind of money. Would you buy books? And that's it.
Thank you. And last but not least, O P C from Karen.
The only thing I have to say is, O P C employees, the cooks, the custodians, bus drivers, secretaries, aides, we're just glad everybody's in school. We're able to have fun with them at recess and other times of the day, whether or not we have our masks on at recess time, which is good. We're just glad we're there.
Okay. Next, we will move on to public participation. So, according to board policy, thirty minutes will be allotted for pu- public participation. Um, community members who choose to address the board will be limited to three minutes. And once the president recognizes you, begin your comments by stating your name. Direct your comments to the president. Speak clearly and to the point. Um, recording the session may only be done after notifying the superintendent. The president reserves the right to interrupt and/or prohibit public comments that are frivolous, repetitive, irrelevant, lengthy, abusive, off-topic, and antagonistic. So, um, Brooke Phillips. Brooke Phillips? Brook- Brooke Phillips?
Who am I looking at for time? You, thank you. Am I good?
Yeah.
Okay. My name's Brooke Phillips, formerly La Fever. Uh, some of you were my teachers. I was an F H S alum. So, was my mother and my grandmother. My, I have, I'm a mother of four. My kids currently do not attend this school and I do not live in the area. I always had expectations I would send them to this school. But, um, seeing how the school has succumbed to the outside worldly pressures, we decided to go elsewhere. So, um, my main point I want to bring up tonight is the, what we're doing to our children. I, we can go back and forth on the science. For every article you can find me about how masks work, I can find you ten that don't. I can tell you what my pediatrician says about masks and vaccines, and you can tell me someone else will say something different. My pediatrician is definitely against it. Anyway, um, what we're doing to our kids as far as dividing them with these masks and, uh, the vaccine. And when we have parents in the community who name-call other parents publicly dipshits, that's his word, not mine, for not masking our children, if you don't think that's trickling down to our kids and bullying wasn't already an issue, you're sadly mistaken. Do you know that suicide is the number-two killer of children aged ten to fourteen? And then again, the number-two killer for young adolescents fifteen to twenty-four. Our kids, our kids are thirteen times more likely to die killing themselves than this virus. And if you think these masks and these social distancing and the quarantining are helping those numbers, then you are not in touch with reality. Um, hospitals... Hospitals are reporting a two-hundred-and-fifty percent increase. This is from the C D C. Two-hundred-and-fifty percent increase in suicide attempts. Females, teen females are at a fifty-one percent increased rate to try to take their lives. One out of ten kids, I'm sure in this room, there's a thousand kids. One out of every ten is, has attempted suicide, per the C D C, everybody's favorite website. Look it up. It's out there. This is a serious issue, okay? We are going to kill our children. We, as parents, is this the, that viciveness in the country, we are trickling it down to our kids. And if you think that the long-term effects of COVID or a mask is lasting, think of what we're doing to them up here. Think about what they're going to deal with for the rest of their lives because of what they had to deal with in high school, okay? I had a great experience in high school. I would never send my kids to this public high school, ever, ever, ever. I'm sorry to say that. It's just the truth. I care too much about my children and I grew up in this community. According to the N I H, suicide has increased, um, I'm sorry, according to a report from Franklin County, central Ohio, um, it has increased from five and a half percent to nine percent in one year. One year. Uh, can I end with taking a moment of silence for all those children who have taken their lives? Thank you. Thank you.
Eric Van Houten? Yeah.
Uh, my name's Eric Van Houten, um, third generation. My grandson's fifth generation. I have currently no kids in the school other than my grandchild, who I believe anonymous. I'm here because I'm speaking for the five-year-olds, the six-year-olds, the seven-year-olds, the eight-year-olds. It's one thing to tell an adult to wear a mask. It's different for a five-year-old. My grandson the other day was crying because he said, "Papa. Papa, I can't breathe." And I don't know if you guys are grandpals or not, or if there's any grandparents in here. I was so infuriated. So, that's why I'm here. If you guys, I'm going to ask a question, and of course, you guys probably don't want to answer it. But if you believe in the C D C, then you probably believe that the ninety thousand student, uh, test that they had, that forty-five thousand students were under a mask mandate and the other forty-five thousand students were under a mask choice. And at the end of that test result, they couldn't tell which classes had the mandates and which one had the choices. It's, it's, uh, quite remarkable. And I know that everyone here is very intelligent. And I didn't want to disrespect you. And I apologize for disrespecting you, if I did. But it's one thing to have an adult wear a mask. It's a whole different ballgame. It's a whole different ballgame for a five-year-old who's scared to death if he takes it off. If I'm, can't breathe, I'll just pull my mask down and get yelled at. I don't care. But if a five-year-old can't breathe, and I get the mask, his, there's recesses and all that stuff, but they don't know that. All they want to do is listen to their teachers because they're good parents and their grandparents told them to. And the other thing is about the oxygen level of the mask. I heard the, uh, the current superintendent say that it's a requirement for a faculty to wear a C D C-proved mask. That I don't think any of you guys are wearing currently, maybe this one. So, you're like defining her as she's sitting there, which is kind of cool. But it's like, all these random masks, and even the ones that are getting paid by this lady, who are ultimately getting paid by us, is, is defying you. And it's just like no consistency. So, all I ask is, we the people want no mask, or even your choice. We don't care if you wear it. If you believe that the masks work, then why does it matter what we do? Why does it matter? It doesn't matter what C D C non-proved masks that you're wearing, Mrs. Patty Miller.
Okay.
Thank you for the time.
Yep, thank you. Judy Geppenzer?
My name is Judy Geppenzer. I'm from Mount Vernon. I've been a Knox County resident all my life. First and foremost, I'm a Christian. Second, I'm a mother. I am also a certified medical assistant. I graduated in two thousand and seven with a degree in science. COVID began in two thousand and two, better known as SARS one. If anybody doesn't know what SARS stands for, it's severe acute respiratory syndrome. In two thousand and four, there was an outbreak. Eight thousand people were infected. Only seven hundred and seventy-four of those died. In two thousand and nineteen, COVID, SARS two, resurfaced again. The pandemic then, is when the C D C is then when they called it a pandemic. In two thousand and two, it was never deemed a pandemic. In two thousand and two, when it started, as a community, as a, a state, as a world, we never had lockdowns. We never had curfews after ten P M, where we had to stay in our homes. Our children were not mandated to wear a mask. In March of two thousand and twenty-one, the city of Mount Vernon, including Knox County, was given thirty million dollars. Of that thirty million dollars, Mount Vernon and Knox County received five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars from the CARE Act. You can look that up. It's on the board site. My daughter is an eighth-grade student. She plays in band. She also wears glasses. Last year, she had to take her glasses off. She has two stigmatisms. She could not wear her glasses because she could not see because of they fogging up. What I have here on this desk is a carbon dioxide and an oxygen beater. When a child is placed into a mask or anybody, the carbon dioxide raises and the oxygen rate lowers. It takes a matter of seconds. I have it here. I would like to bring my daughter up and test it to prove it to you. It also holds bacteria. I do not understand why our children are deemed to wear a mask, don't put it on yet, are deemed to wear a mask at school and social distance, but a football stadium can pack in sixty thousand people as ants and not have to social distance. How is that fair to our children? This is killing our children. It is wreaking havoc on their mental stability. I have a thirteen-year-old daughter that cried before this pandemic started, as it started, at the beginning of twenty-twenty, asking me, "Mama, please make this go away." As far as I'm concerned as a parent, it's gone. It's not going away. It's a virus. Get used to it. The flu isn't going away. Strokes, heart attacks, none of it is going away.
Your three minutes.
Can I please show her, or show you on this machine? According to the C D C guidelines, four hundred is the normal, what you start out with. Anything above that and beyond is not normal because it's creating carbon dioxide within those masks. We are under three seconds and she's at nineteen forty-seven. Two thousand and eighty-two. Twenty-one oh-four. Two thousand. Two hundred and twenty-four. Two hundred and twenty-six. These machines do, two hundred and eighty-eight, and she is breathing normal. Imagine wearing that for eight hours a day. What are you doing to our children?
Next, we have Heather Break.
Ready?
Yeah.
Hey. Uh, my name is Heather Break. I'm currently in a very difficult situation. So, I am both a teacher and a parent in this school district. I almost didn't speak tonight because I'm smack dab in the middle and I don't know which way to go. I'm going to put a, I have, literally, I'm a teacher, so I almost brought two hats. If you guys know me, yes, I'd probably do that. But anyways, my first hat, I'm going to speak for just a moment as a teacher. And I decided that I need to see, say what I see publicly. I teach fifth grade at Fredericton, and these are my daily observations. I see masks getting chewed on. I see masks being worn as headbands during mask breaks. I see masks fall on the floor and get picked up and reused. I remind kids daily to put on masks and watch them touch them over and over and over and contaminate their own hands. I see the same mask day after day that is not washed. The list goes on. I see a supposed medical device being used improperly. I hear sighs of relief when I say, "Mask break." Occasionally, I've even heard, "Finally, I can breathe." I have heard myself say, "I will have to give you a Friday school or write you up if you do not properly wear your mask." And I have questioned if that is the right thing to do. I spend... I spend instruction time starting and stopping a timer to take mask breaks. I see lower morale in students than I have seen in years. And yes, I've been here for seventeen years. I am being asked to be a mask police when our own Knox County Sheriff's Office does not, it said that that is not your job. I am being asked to put masks on children every day, and this is the only place that I see it being done besides hospitals that I would comment they are using the proper folk protocol and providing a clean, germ-free mask every time you enter the building. Okay? Uh, one more comment. I truly believe our trend data would have gone down with or without masks. I do not believe my mask is keeping me in school. Now, I'm going to switch to being a parent for a second. I'm also a parent of five children in the district. As a parent, I am disappointed, but my school board gave this decision to one person. As a parent, it is very difficult to convince my own children to go to school wearing a mask when they know that everywhere else they do not have to. As a parent, I'm disappointed that the decision was decided and the mask mandate all occurred within about an hour of each other and were added to an agenda of another meeting at the last minute. As a parent, I feel that my right to make metal dis- medical decisions for my children is being decided by someone else. I want to decide that my child has their own immune system I believe God gave them and they can use to fight this disease. I did not get chickenpox vaccines for my own children. I made that decision that I wanted them to get chickenpox themselves. And so, I want to make the same decision. I want to end with the fact that my husband has been protesting. And one morning, he got up to leave wearing his Marine hat and his Marine shirt. And I asked, "Why are you wearing that?" He said, "I fought for freedom in the Gulf War and today I will continue to fight for..."
Jennifer Bostick?
Members of the school board, my concern to address with you this evening is regarding the last special board meeting on August thirty-first. There were two very important things on the agenda, both the downtown redevelopment district and this protective facial coverings policy. My concern addressing you is that we, there was much discussion before at the previous board meeting about the downtown redevelopment district. And there were lots of comments made about, "We'll have to find things out. We'll have to talk about it." But yeah, when we met in that... But yeah, when we met in that meeting, all of the decisions that evening were made in a matter of less than 10 minutes. Us as a community were not given any information as to why you decided the way you did for things like the downtown redevelopment district. Yes, there was a post on the school website following the meeting, but there was no discussion. Somebody at one point in the previous meeting had said, "Well, we need to see what our attorneys say about the contract." That wasn't brought up. And interestingly enough, I found it interesting that none of the board members discussed with one another their thoughts, opinions, or ideas about the downtown redevelopment district. It just went straight to a vote. In addition, the protective facial coverings policy was also put on that agenda, and it was just listed as a protective facial coverings policy. And there was no explanation of what it was, what it was for, or why you were voting on it, and there was no discussion among the board members as to what that would mean for our community. My request is for transparency in what you're doing and what you are deciding. That is my request as a parent.
Okay, the next is Danielle Vale.
Hello again, everyone. My name is Danielle Vale. I'm a certified nurse practitioner and a mother of two children at Fredericton. At the last meeting, I went over the detriments of continuing to mask, continuing to mask children in the school. I used cited, peer-reviewed references, and I discussed the harmful effects of masking children in school, including the effects on language acquisition, speech development, long-term immune regulation, as well as children's ability to navigate society with non-verbal cues and facial expressions. In addition, I provided some suggestions of returning to some of the previous protocols and solution to minimize the amount of quarantines among our children. Myself and many other parents are disappointed that no other protocols to help social distancing and protect our children have been implemented. I just wanna add something here. I know that you guys have stated that those have been added. I'm hearing from a lot of workers at the school, a lot of teachers, about that the desks are not separated as they were last year. The cafeteria policies have all changed. The cleaning protocols have all changed. Today, I would like to focus more on the aspect of behavioral and mental health of children who are being mandated to wear masks. Reports from other children and families regarding their children being scrutinized and disciplined if their masks are not worn properly only proves the points which I touched on at the last meeting. These children are more focused on if they will be in trouble regarding the placement of their masks rather than their education. Children constantly tugging at an ill-fitting piece of fabric on their face lead to self-contamination. Now, we are not only concerned about COVID, but multiple other contaminants that they're being exposed to. We teach our children to wash their hands, keep them away from their face, do not touch their mouth, nose, eyes, sneeze into your elbows, but now we're training them to be compliant, instructing them to do the opposite of those very tasks. Throughout my visits to the school, I've witnessed many adult staff members improperly wearing their masks with noses exposed dangling from one ear or maybe not at all, yet you punish our children. Some students are struggling extra at home right now because they are not wanting to attend school with such chabacery. Parents pleading with their children to go to school attempt to have a positive experience throughout the day because they feel like it's what's in their best entrance, interest to be present at the school. I encourage each of you sitting here today, thinking that there's no harm in children wearing masks every day, to think about the child silently struggling and afraid. Think about the child unable to see and mimic other's facial expressions and develop empathetic connections feeling alone and isolated. Think about how impersonal our little school district has become. We rely on teachers, aides, office staff, cafeteria workers, and healthcare workers to help identify when a child is in need socially, mentally, emotionally, and physically. Masking the lower portion of the face makes it difficult to read these non-verbal cues, and these needs now are going unnoticed. There's a misconception regarding the resilience of children. The psychological stressors or trauma a child is exposed to does not make them resilient, but merely changes them during their development. According to the National Child Traumatic Stress Network, when children are faced with such daily stress, they will begin to develop coping mechanisms merely allowing them to survive or get by day to day. During adulthood, this can lead to strained relationships, body dysregulation, impaired social skills, and self-regulation issues. Coincidentally enough, the very characteristics that are considered necessary for development of resilience. Fredericton School District parents are requesting that you reconsider returning the masks to parent choice. We would like you to be more transparent in your future plans regarding protocols in place. We would like to be informed of the guidelines you are using when placing our students in quarantine. We would like to know what the threshold is for implementing and removing mask mandates. We would like better communication resources and more availability to reach our district's leadership.
Okay, thank you. Next is Tara Woolby.
Good evening. I am Tara Woolby, mother of three and a longtime resident of Fredericton. What is the goal of our public school system? According to the Ohio Department of Education, the goal is that in Ohio, each child is challenged, prepared, and empowered. Now, per Ohio Strategic Plan for Education, the plan's purpose is to lift aspirations, create hope and excitement, guide development of state-level education policies, and promote high-quality educational practices. So shouldn't the fact that the Ohio Department of Education's spring assessments from 2021 across all grades in the state show an 8% decrease in language arts, a 15% decrease in math proficiencies? And also based on these assessments, third-grade students demonstrated roughly 20% less learning on average between November 2020 and April of 2021 compared to all students in prior years. And the under-deserved students in the community, they were hit the hardest. They experienced decreases in learning as a result of this pandemic, probably two to three times more than their peers. As educators, this should be your concern. Their education should be above masking and mask police. Instead, we have our kids stressed out, added anxiety and depression about who's gonna yell at them about moving their mask for three seconds? Who's gonna yell at them next? What they're expected to do? How they can't focus? Because I'm sorry, I can't hear half of you in the back of this room with your mask on. And that's what my kid is dealing with every day. I'm just asking, we are all asking for a choice. We don't need you to just say, "No masking at all." We want a choice. We want our kids to not fight and cry every day. My kindergartner shouldn't be bawling. This should be his introduction to school, and this is ruining it. I just, we want a choice. And I, this is like Brooke talked about, the emotional. Give us our choice.
Next one is Hallie Lerner.
My name is Hallie Lerner. I am a resident of Fredericton, a mother of five, and an American. I have something prepared, but before I get started, I would just like to advise to the board. I started a group of parents because we had nowhere to go. We had no one that we could reach out to to get representation. We have reached out to our legislators. We reached out to administration. We reached out to faculty. We reached out to the board members. We reached out to the president. We reached out to the superintendent. We've reached out to the principals. And we got nowhere. With that being said... The reason that, that being said, just so that we're all on the same page, that's my main fight tonight. Because it's clear by the amount of people that are in this room and by the amount of people that I've been able to connect with and hear from their stories, that you guys aren't listening. You're pushing some other kind of directive. And we need answers. This is our children. Definition of parental rights is for the right of the parent to make any decision regarding that child. It is not the job of the faculty. It is not the job of the administration. It's not the job of the school board. You guys are elected officials. You're supposed to be representing us. Where's the transparency? Over the last week, I have done what you all should have been doing. I reached out to parents. I talked to them. I listened to them. I heard their stories. I have emails, email responses. From those, well, obviously, I'm getting all jumbled up here. We requested meetings. We requested to have conversations. We want to talk about this issue. It's that important. Instead, we were met with misdirection. We were ignored, and some were even made to feel discriminated against. Some were questioned on their religious beliefs, because I'm gonna circle back to that. You cannot, you cannot ask someone about their personal religious beliefs. I have been a recruiter for over 20 years. I'm very familiar with EEOC. You cannot question anybody about their personal beliefs. It is illegal. From an employment standpoint, when you're going to vet people before they're getting hired into positions, and we all should be doing our due diligence from this period on, vetting who we put in here to represent our children. For the educators and the administration of this school district to take more of a vested interest in pursuing some kind of an agenda rather than doing what we pay you all to do, which is to focus on the education of our children, it's appalling and it's disgusting.
Is that three minutes? Okay. Thank you. Next, Thomas Groschon.
I'm Thomas Groschon. I've lived in this community since I was in kindergarten. I went to school here. I still live here. My kids go to school here. And I worry that sometimes the people in this room are, feel like they're immune to facts and science, that they prefer orders and mandates and just want compliance. And I know a lot of people in this room have been really worried about that. So let me break this down into terms that even bureaucrats can understand. It is wrong to mandate masks for children. You as a government body do not know better how to take care of my kid. I know my child's risks. I know my family's risks. I have always had the option to have my child wear a mask or not. For you, representatives of the state, to say that you know better than me what my child needs is beyond insulting. There may be parents who demand that the schools mandate masks for their children. There may even be state institutions that demand it. But just because they demand it doesn't mean they have the authority or the right to do so. Parents always have the right to put their own kids in masks, but nobody has the right to force my child to wear a mask against my wishes. It is also wrong for you to dangle the false choice of a mask mandate versus closing the school. It's a farce and it's untrue. The quarantine rules that you say that you, that you allege that you're required to follow are still recommendations. You had no problem starting the school year not listening to KPH recommendations. And there's law nor morality nor logic are on your side there. It has never made sense to quarantine healthy people, but that's exactly what you do. Fifteen active cases and over 100 quarantine kids, most of whom were never even symptomatic. You design rules and metrics that inevitably fail, and then you use that as an excuse to push rules further. It's a political game. We're wise to it, and it disgusts us. We, the parents and the people of Fredericton, are not going anywhere. And everyone in this room and all the organizing we've been doing is from one week of grassroots movement. I know many of the people on the board are longtime residents of the area, and a lot of you have dreams of retiring here. So imagine how well that's going to go when your own community considers you social pariahs who attack parental relationships and willingly abuse children using lies as justifications. Every single one of you deserves to resign. And if you don't, we'll just take that as a sign that you would rather fight with the community over control of our children. Each of you on the board have three choices. Give us back our freedom and reinstate parental choice, resign, or prepare to do acrimonious battle with your own community.
Okay, the last one we have time for is Kimberly Groschon.
My name is Dr. Kimberly Groschon. I'm a professional research analyst with many undergraduate, graduate, and doctoral degrees. I have expertise and experience in mathematics, statistics, and several science fields. In my profession, I analyze and critique research, including the validity of research methodologies. I'd like to discuss the scientific foundation laid for the argument about whether or not mask mandates are necessary to protect children in schools. Before I start, I would like to draw attention to an August 2021 analysis publication by Dr. Marty Macari of Johns Hopkins and Dr. Cody Meisner, who is the chief pediatric infectious disease doctor at Tufts Children's Hospital. He also served as FDA's external advisory panel for the COVID-19 vaccine. Dr. Maurice Johns Hopkins Research Team stated that of the $42 billion and National Institute of Health spent on research last year, less than 2% went to COVID clinical research. Not a single grant was awarded for the study of masks in children. I reviewed over 30 published research on the topic of masks that are cited by this body, as well as the state, the CDC, and the NIH. This is a heavily conflicting field of research, as been pointed out by others. The articles are based upon weak and bad science, where different populations are being compared. Research involving nurses, medical professionals are being compared to children. Research drawing mask benefit conclusions without a control group, such as an unmasked population, for comparison is common. Large-city mask mandates over several months with comparable increase and decrease in the number of COVID cases at cities without mask mandates. Conclusions are drawn on the premise of appropriate wearing of a mask by adults. Many of them are trained professionals in these studies. The wearing of medical-grade masks. I would like to cite a UK article published in April 2021 that noted that 85% of all masks made worldwide come from China, and concerns have been raised over substandard manufacturing and opaque supply chains. The masks intended for use by the general public are not deemed to be personal protective equipment. Therefore, they do not have to meet the same standards as those worn by doctors. Medical research about masks, using medical masks and medical professionally-trained people cannot be used to compare masks worn by children. This body has cited the Ohio Schools COVID-19 Evaluation Study that was published in January 29, 2021, as rationale for the mask mandate. The research position stated in this paper says that in-person schooling benefits children's learning and social development, but many children are missing because of quarantine. The research focus of that paper is how to reduce quarantine. There were many statements that are drawn about the benefit of masks even though masks were not studied. There were survey questions about masks, where many people reported a heavy reliance on cloth masks. Teachers in schools using mask breaks with an average of eight out of 28 students taking a five-minute break during class is the most common and average time period out of a mask. If masks are important, mask breaks cannot be done. This is a conflict to the science that is being supported.
Okay, that's, that's three, but thank you.
I have a statement yet to make. I have a statement yet to make.
Go ahead.
If funding is not tied to the CDC compliance, then the decision is in your hands. If you're going to impose mandates on people who do not want it, then you need to clearly prove that the policy is grounded on solid research. It is my professional opinion. In the analysis of thirty CDC articles, they are flawed and based on weak science. Simple articles that refer to the fourteen types of masks cited by our superintendent as grounds for mask mandates was based on a comment from the researcher himself, who said this was never intended to be scientific research.
Thank you. Thank you all for your, um, participation. And now we'll move into executive session for the purpose of personnel and matters to be kept confidential. No action to follow. May I have a motion to approve that? Roll call.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Blanchard.
Yes.
Mrs. McClain.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Striebe.
Yes.